Okay, the Brazos County Commissioners will meet in workshop session, May 23rd, 9:00 AM, Commission's Court Room, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue. First item is called order. Second is presentation and discussion of community support contracts request for the proposed budget year FY 2025-2026. I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, county judge and commissioners. Today, we're going to hear some more outside agencies for funding for next year. Before we start, I do like to make sure that when they are called up to the podium, they do state who they are and which organization they are with, and please speak into the mic. And I do ask for cell phones to be silent so the court can hear the presentations that are being discussed at the time. At this point, I would like to invite the Brazos County Emergency Communications District, 911, up to discuss their requests.
Good morning, judge and commissioners. Today, we're going to hear some more outside agencies for funding for next year. Before we start, I do like to make sure that when they are called up to the podium, they do state who they are and which organization they are with, and please speak into the mic. And I do ask for cell phones to be silent so the court can hear the presentations that are being discussed at the time. At this point, I would like to invite the Brazos County Emergency Communications District, 911, up to discuss their requests.
Good morning, judge and commissioners. I'm Laura Blackburn with the Brazos County 911 District. Our organization provides dispatching services for the Brazos County Sheriff's Office, all four constable precincts, and all four county fire departments in the area. Our proposed FY 26 budget is presented to you here. It includes an increase of almost $75,000 from the previous year. This is a 5.3% increase, and the vast majority of that, 94% of it, is to improve wages and benefits for the dispatchers. As you can see in the little pie chart that I've given you, 97% of the money you provide to us goes to pay for wages and benefits for the dispatchers. We're actually looking this year to increase the starting pay for the dispatchers from $20 per hour to $22 per hour so that we can remain competitive and hire and retain good employees. We've also incorporated a 5% increase for health insurance premiums. We don't have those exact numbers in yet, but we've, again, incorporated 5% increase for that. The retirement contribution rate that we're required to contribute, it's gone down slightly from 12.59 to 12.31, so nothing significant there. I've included a copy of the pay scale that we're looking to implement for FY 26 there for you on the page. And we've also included just some information about some new things we're looking at doing involving artificial intelligence. We're looking to implement a quality insurance program that uses artificial intelligence and also, sorry, a triage program to answer non-emergency calls for us and help process some of those more efficiently, and also using AI for language translation and call transcription as well. On the back of the page I've handed you, this is a copy of the full budget summary, and you can see the green column is the Brazos County budget. We also have the City of Bryan budget in there as well, and the 911 budget that comes from 911 service fees, just so you can see how everything is incorporated. Are there any questions?
How many current employees do you have?
We have a total of 47 employees. Forty of them are funded with the contract money from the City of Bryan and Brazos County.
What's your retention rate?
It is about...
Turnover?
Turnover rate is about 20%.
Wow. And is that for retiring or just going elsewhere?
Yes, most of it is going elsewhere, unfortunately.
Is that your pay scale? It looks like you take them up to about 10 years, and that's, they don't do much after that.
So, yes, after that, they are eligible for merit increases, so everyone typically gets an annual increase. It's just the amount of that could vary. For the first 10 years, this is what they can expect to see, as long as they have good performance and good attendance, things like that, and have a good evaluation.
Who do you tend to lose your boys to?
So, it can vary from medical fields, some of them become nurses, also police officers, that's happened from time to time. Over the last probably four years, we've lost more people to just moving out of town. So...
Laura, is there any chance in the future that we might be able to pull College Station into default? Are we working on that?
That's probably above my pay grade. It's always been, you know, something that we've wanted, we've strived for at times, it's just never come to fruition, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. You all do a great job.
Thank you.
She's in my row class.
The next one will be Brazos maternal and child healthcare, prenatal care.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about the prenatal clinic, which is the DBA that we use as opposed to Brazos Maternal and Child Health Clinic, which is a mouthful. My name is Lynn Clara Jaeger. I'm the executive director and have been for the past 15 years. If you have specific questions that you have, that you want to be sure that I address, I'm happy to do that now, and then I will share other information about the clinic. Okay. Excited to tell you that in December of 2025, the prenatal clinic will be 40 years old. We started in December of 1985 based upon really a grassroots effort because women were presenting at the hospital at that time with, this is 1985, this is in the early 80s, that women were presenting at the hospital with no opportunity to see a doctor prior to their delivery. So, in that particular 40 years almost, we have seen about 25,000, 23,000 women come through our doors. This year, we'll see about 350, and of those, 85% are Brazos County patients, are Brazos County residents. So, we have looked to Brazos County to help support that because we will see a patient before she has a means to pay. We recognize that early entry to care is critical to the health, not only of that mom, but of the baby, and that we are able to do that. We only serve low-income women. They, we do apply for Medicaid and CHIP, as we've all been watching it very carefully in the healthcare industry. We recognize that Medicaid may suffer some, and we don't know with the women that would come to our clinic. We did look at about the last 90 days, and out of 79 women, there were 15 that we identified that could possibly at risk. So, we may not be affected as much as we feared. The problem that we're looking at is that other funding that we have, that was listed in our proposal, we have received one funding request. We requested $40,000, so we're getting $16,000. So, we're already at a $25,000 deficit, and we recognize that there are others that are going to come in lower than they expected. So, these dollars, as they always are important, and they're important to everybody else here, we're not unique in that, but the dollars that we are asking for are to support our paid staff. We have a contract with Texas A&amp;M College of Medicine to provide medical providers. We have board-certified doctors and second and third-year residents who have added an advanced OB/TRAC at our clinic. That allows us to have these board-certified physicians at about 20% of the cost through, that we would have to pay if we had to hire one. But we do have to hire a receptionist and an office assistant and certified medical assistants, and so the dollars that we are asking for is to help pay for the medical care, the actual people that provide the medical care for us. Anything else I could share?
Other than reimbursements in the county, where do you get other funds from?
We, we do get Medicaid and CHIP, and that is really about 25% to 30% of the cost of running the clinic. We have grants, we have a large fundraiser, one fundraiser each year, and then we rely on the generosity of our community, and, you know, dollars are tight there too. So, we're kind of at an unknown, as with everybody else. I'm not going to pretend that we're the only one that are coming here in that same position, but we also recognize that if you take care of babies early, the chances that they will not have challenges, we can maybe prevent some challenges that may happen, that are way more expensive than paying for prenatal care.
Do either of the two cities contribute money to you?
Yes, they do. But one of the cities was significantly less than it has been. We don't know what we will get from the City of Bryan yet, although they have, they have funded us, we just don't know what that's going to be yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one will be National Alliance on Mental Illness, also known as NAMI. Okay, we'll move right down to the next one, which is Salvation Army of Bryan College Station.
Good morning, Judge Peters and commissioners of the court. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. My name is Captain Luis Villanueva, and I serve as the commander officer for the Salvation Army of Brazos County. So, on behalf of our entire team, volunteers and staff and clients, I want to say thank you for your support that we received last year, $25,000 from Brazos County. Your partnership allows us to respond to urgent needs in our community, and your support makes a real difference in people's lives. The Salvation Army is a global organization, and we serve more than 130 countries around the world, and we serve here in the United States from 1865. And our mission has been to meet human need and grace name without discrimination. Here in Brazos County, the Salvation Army has been a lifeline for individuals and families in crisis for decades. We serve Brazos County and the broader Brazos Valley, including Burleson, Grimes, Leon, Madison, Robertstone, and Washington Counties. Our programs include rent and utility assistance, a community food pantry, youth services, disaster relief, and case management. And with the help of our generous community, we also provide hundreds of children with Christmas gifts each year. Last year, we served over 2,300 children from the Brazos County alone. So, while we're thankful for the funds that we received last year, the need has only been... It's just the amount of that could vary. For the first ten years, this is what they can expect to see, as long as they have good performance and good attendance, things like that, and have a good evaluation.
Who do you tend to lose your boys to?
So, it can vary from medical fields. Some of them become nurses. Also, police officers, that's happened from time to time. Over the last probably four years, we've lost more people to just moving out of town. So.
Lori, is there any chance in the future that we might be able to pull College Station into default? Are we working on that?
That's probably above my pay grade. It's always been, you know, something that we've wanted, we've strived for at times, it's just never come to fruition, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Y'all do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's in my road class.
The next one will be Brazos maternal and child healthcare prenatal care.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about the prenatal clinic, which is the DBA that we use as opposed to Brazos Maternal and Child Health Clinic, which is a mouthful. My name is Lynn Clara Jaeger. I'm the executive director and have been for the past fifteen years. If you have specific questions that you have, that you want to be sure that I address, I'm happy to do that now, and then I will share other information about the clinic. I'm excited to tell you that in December of two thousand twenty-five, the prenatal clinic will be forty years old. We started in December of nineteen eighty-five, based upon really a grassroots effort, because women were presenting at the hospital at that time with, this nineteen eighty-five, this is in the early eighties, that women were presenting at the hospital with no opportunity to see a doctor prior to their delivery. So, in that particular forty years almost, we have seen about twenty-five, twenty-three thousand women come through our doors. This year, we'll see about three hundred and fifty, and of those, eighty-five percent are Brazos County patients, are Brazos County residents. So, we are, have looked to Brazos County to help support that, because we will see a patient before she has a means to pay. We recognize that early entry to care is critical to the health, not only of that mom, but of the baby, and that we are able to do that. We only serve low-income women. They, we do apply for Medicaid and CHIP, as we've all been watching it very carefully in the healthcare industry. We recognize that Medicaid may, may suffer some, and we don't know if the women that would come to our clinic. We did look at about the last ninety days, and out of seventy-nine women, there were fifteen that we identified that could possibly at risk. So, we, we may not be affected as much as we feared. The problem that we're looking at is that other funding that we have, that was listed in our proposal, we have received one funding request. We requested forty thousand dollars, we're getting sixteen thousand dollars. So, we're already at a twenty-five thousand dollar deficit, and we recognize that there are others that are going to come in lower than they expected. So, these dollars, as they always are important, and they're important to everybody else here. We're not unique in that. But the dollars that we are asking for are to support our paid staff. We have a contract with Texas A&amp;M College of Medicine to provide medical providers. We have board-certified doctors and second- and third-year residents who have added an advanced OB/TRAC at our clinic. That allows us to have these board-certified physicians at about twenty percent of the cost through, that we would have to pay if we had to hire one. But we do have to hire a receptionist, and an office assistant, and certified medical assistants, and so the dollars that we are asking for is to help pay for the medical care, the actual people that provide the medical care for us. Anything else I could share?
Other than reimbursements in the county, where do you get other funds from?
We, we do get Medicaid and CHIP, and that is really about twenty-five to thirty percent of the cost of running the clinic. We have grants, we have a large fundraiser, one fundraiser each year, and then we rely on the generosity of our community, and, you know, dollars are tight there, too. So, we're kind of at an unknown, as with everybody else. I'm not going to pretend that we're the only one that are coming here in that same position, but we also recognize that if you take care of babies early, the chances that they will not have challenges, we can maybe prevent some challenges that may happen, that are way more expensive than paying for prenatal care.
Do either of the two cities contribute money to you?
Yes, they do. But one of the cities was significantly less than it has been. We don't know what we will get from the City of Bryan yet, although they have, they have funded us, we just don't know what that's going to be yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one will be National Alliance on Mental Illness, also known as NAMI. Okay, we'll move right down to the next one, which is Salvation Army of Bryan College Station.
Good morning, Judge Peters and Commissioners of the Court. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. My name is Captain Luis Villanueva, and I serve as the Commander Officer for the Salvation Army of Brazos County. So, on behalf of our entire team, volunteers and staff, and clients, I want to say thank you for your support that we received last year, twenty-five thousand dollars from Brazos County. Your partnership allows us to respond to urgent needs in our community, and your support makes a real difference in people's lives. The Salvation Army is a global organization, and we serve more than a hundred and thirty countries around the world, and we serve here in the United States from eighteen sixty-five. And our mission has been to meet human need and grace name without discrimination. Here in Brazos County, the Salvation Army has been a lifeline for individuals and families in crisis for decades. We serve Brazos County and the broader Brazos Valley, including Burleson, Grimes, Leon, Madison, Robertstone, and Washington Counties. Our programs include rent and utility assistance, a community food pantry, youth services, disaster relief, and case management. And with the help of our generous community, we also provide hundreds of children with Christmas gifts each year. Last year, we served over twenty-three hundred children from the Brazos County alone. So, while we're thankful for the funds that we received last year, the need has only just grown. So, this year, we're requesting thirty-five thousand dollars to increase the number of families we can assist through the Armageddon C Rent and Utility Assistance Program. Every dollar from Brazos County goes directly to help clients. It is important also to note that the Salvation Army covers all staffing and administrative costs through our internal budget and fundraising. So, that means that a hundred percent of your investment, of the funds, goes in the hands of the people with, where they need it the most. With the current year's funding, we were able to assist approximately fifty-five families, helping nearly a hundred and fifty individuals remain housed and avoid utility shut-offs. The average assistant per household was four hundred and fifty to five fifty, but unfortunately, due to the overwhelming demand, those funds were fully distributed by early January, just a few days into the second quarter. We anticipate an even greater number of requests in the coming months, particularly with the launch of our online system Salvation Army Helps, which simplifies the application process and increases accessibility for those in crisis. So Brazos County's continued and increased support will help bring greater stability to this program, allowing us to meet rising demands and serve more residents in two thousand twenty-five and beyond. So with this new request, we will serve more than sixty households in two thousand twenty-five, reaching now to hopefully a hundred and eighty individuals in the Brazos County. If fully funded and supported through our fundraising efforts, we anticipate serving a similar and increased number of households in two thousand twenty-six. We prioritize individuals and families facing imminent eviction, households with children and elderly clients over fifty-five years old. Each household is eligible to receive assistance once per year, covering up to a month of rent or utility service. When someone comes to the Salvation Army, it's usually because of an expected life event, an illness, job loss, or car repair, or something that threatens their housing. Our program offers timely, compassionate intervention that prevents further financial spiral. We see this program as a direct response to the needs of Brazos County is already facing. When we have a family stay in their home, we reduce pressure of emergency services, shelter, and other county resources. It's a cost-effective proactive solution to a systemic issue. So while we help at one time, the Salvation Army goes beyond that. Our Pathway of Hope program initiative offers three to six months of case management to help families being long-term stability. We work one-on-one with our clients to set goals, improve decision-making, and connecting them to educational and employment opportunities. Rather than simply preventing homelessness, we walk alongside these people, helping them build the tools and confidence needed to make stronger choices and avoid crisis in the future. It's about equipping, not just rescuing. The Salvation Army is committed to transparency, integrity, and accountability. And so, also, we apply to additional grants to use also for this program, and the Salvation Army also provides funds to supplement the rent and utility assistance. So, we stretch every dollar to help as many people as possible. So the funds from Brazos County enhance and stabilize the reach of this program. Finally, we acknowledge that none of this is possible without the broad support of the Brazos County community, business, churches, volunteers, individuals, donors, and leaders like you. So we're incredibly grateful for the trust placed in us to carry out this work. So, in closing, this investment, or this funding, will provide to keep families together and housed, to keep essential utilities running, and provide an opportunity for long-term transformation through tools like Pathway of Hope Initiative. So thank you again for the opportunity, and we are here to respond to any questions that you may have.
Captain, do y'all get money from either of the two cities?
Yes, sir. We applied for the City College Station. They just awarded us twenty-five thousand dollars for rent and utilities, and the City of Bryan, we're paying for a result on that. The Salvation Army also adds more of that funding, and then we have donors and private donors that also provides this to the amount of rental utility.
I served on your board for ten years under John Cecil Culpepper, if that doesn't go back far enough. And what I'd like to, to get this Commissioners' Court-
Yeah.
-to do in December is all of us pick a side and see who can raise the most money ringing the bell for one night.
Okay, there you go. We can make that happen.
Okay. Did you hear that, Judge?
I hear it.
We appreciate your time, and I don't know if there's any other questions?
Thank you, Captain Villanueva.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
The next up will be Brazos County Crisis Center, also known as SARC.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good morning.
I am the, I'm Leah White, the Director of Outreach and Development for the Sexual Assault Resource Center, and with me is Kim Dimmitt, our Executive Director. So our agency has been in this community since nineteen eighty-three. It was individuals in this court that did feel that the community needed some resources for survivors of sexual assault. SARC funding comes from a variety of different areas, so state and federal opportunities, along with local organizations like yourself. We have fundraising events. Our fashion show just wrapped up in April, and we do have our gala coming up in August. We have individual donors as well. So what does SARC do for the community? We have three, four primary areas that provide services. So counseling, crisis intervention, education, and advocacy. All of our services are free to survivors of sexual assault. So sexual violence has an umbrella. It's not just rape. We have sex trafficking, sexual harassment, all the way down to sexual reproductive coercion as well. What makes SARC unique is that there are no session limits on our counseling. SARC is only one of eight standalone organizations for sexual assault resources within the state of Texas, and there's no time limit to seek those services within, after your assault. So it could be something that happened recently, it could be some individual who has decided now at forty years old that they want to face their childhood sexual assault. Our clients are over thirteen years of age. Thirty-nine percent of those clients are twenty-five to fifty-nine years old, and sixty-seven percent of our clients are female. These survivors range from, there are family members, there are mothers, our daughters, our wives, sons, husbands, our neighbors, coworkers, and our friends. In two thousand twenty-four, we had four hundred and ninety-eight individual clients. Over two hundred and seventy-seven of them came from Brazos County. Of those four hundred and ninety-eight survivors are, those survivors sought three thousand three hundred and ninety-eight hours of counseling. There was a hundred and fifteen individual hospital accompaniments. Every single one of those hospital accompaniments did happen here in Brazos County at the Baylor Scott and White on Rock Prairie. Three hundred and ninety-nine received our advocacy services. So those are all the other things that come with sexual assault. So that might be changing their locks, needing, if they are a student, helping with Title Nine. It could be changing work schedules, transportation, et cetera. All those, like I said, unknown things that come unexpectedly with someone who has experienced sexual assault. Two hundred and forty-six of them received individual counseling. We had twenty-one legal service advocacy services. Six hundred and thirty-two individuals called our crisis hotline. That crisis hotline is a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week service that we provide to individuals seeking support after a sexual assault. We have a new peer support program, and fifty-two individuals started with that program last year, and that program did start last year as well. The SARC facilitates the SART meetings, so those are the Sexual Assault Response Teams. They are made up of SARC staff, forensic nurses, district attorneys, and all of our local jurisdiction police officers. Each month, that meeting happens at our SARC offices, and they review fifty to sixty cases every single month. All of these cases are currently under investigation or being prosecuted here in Brazos Valley, or Brazos County, excuse me. So why are we doing this? Your reactions to sexual assault could be a wide variety. So there's physical reactions, so concerns for your physical safety, actual physical injuries, psychological reactions, so flashbacks, nightmares, PTSD, emotional reactions, so that guilt and shame an individual is dealing with after a sexual assault. Sexual assault impacts six point three men and women here in the state of Texas alone, two in five women, and one in five men. SARC saw the biggest increase over the past couple of years, from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, of thirty-six percent increase in need for services and a hundred and eighteen percent increase in education events. We are focused on one mission, that's supporting survivors of sexual violence through our advocacy, counseling, and crisis intervention, and working to end sexual violence here in the Brazos Valley. We are looking this year to not increase any of our requests for funding. We have, we, just like a lot of organizations, are also looking at the potential for changes in federal funding, but we have worked to offset those potential changes, or any of our increase through other funding sources. Portions of our funding request this year is covering our outreach, staff therapists, our Director of Advocacy, and some of our rent. Sorry, that is all. Any questions? Sorry.
Do you get any money from the cities?
Yes, we do. We get money from the cities and some of, one of the cities, and then several of the other counties as well.
Which is the other city that doesn't give you any support?
College Station.
Really? Okay.
They help us at our, they sponsor a gala, they do a gala sponsorship, but there's no other funding outside of that.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the work you do, for your presentation to Leah.
I just wanted to offer, if you have any questions about the organization and the operations of it, I'm here as well. She did such an amazing job, it doesn't look like you have any question. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next will be the Volunteer Fire Department for Precinct One, Two, Three, and Four. I kind of like them all to come up together and discuss their requests.
Good morning, how are y'all doing?
Good morning.
Jodah Moore, and I'm with Precinct Four Volunteer Fire Department. We appreciate the twenty-five thousand that y'all have given each department in the past. Now, what Miss Payne is passing out, I went and broke this down, and this is just for Precinct Four, and some of these other guys may want to talk about exactly how they use our funding. But that twenty, that twenty-nine thousand dollars, the first of October, our insurance premiums come to for the volunteer firefighters. So we take that, and you can see the annual premiums are due in October, workers' comp, ten thousand five eighty-one, accident sickness, twenty-two thousand five hundred and forty, group term life, five thousand eight oh two seventy. So all that combined is eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars seventy cents. So that leaves us ten thousand dollars to play, to work with, bring on a new volunteer firefighter. Number one, recruiting and retention is getting harder to do. It's not just a local problem, it's a national problem. We don't see that type of, we don't see those type of people wanting to join the volunteer firefighters. It's hard to get people to volunteer when you tell them that they have to get certified before they go on the call. And when, to get them certified, you're looking at five hundred and seventy-five to six hundred hours in training, and that costs seven hundred and fifty dollars per person. And that's just at the firefighter, firefighter one, two, and hazmat. They're governed by the State Fireman Fire Marshal Association, or we are, and they have to get that training. Once they're certified, then they can start making calls. They can respond from home if they're available, or they can come to the station and wait on the call. One of the things that our department, and I know the other departments are working on it also, we're trying to make the station a little more friendly to attract these younger firefighters, because firefighting is a young man's job. My job is sit outside and tell them what to do. So we try to provide them, you know, a TV room, recliners, game room, kitchen, bathrooms, and sleep rooms, and they can stay stationed if they want to and wait on the call. Continuing education, you got to keep them trained up because everything's changing. We provide training to our members by letting them attend the TEACH Spring and Summer Schools out here at ESTI, and those classes run anywhere from seven hundred to a thousand dollars per person. And we can apply through Texas Forest Service to get some of that reimbursement back. PPE, this one here is a big killer for us. Once a member is certified, then we have to outfit them with all the protective clothing from head to toe. That's for structural gear and dual-compliant gear, which we use for wildland fires and auto extrication. And you're looking at six thousand dollars per person just on a set of protective clothing. The radio and pagers, they're assigned to the new firefighter once they are trained, and you're looking at a pager cost of six hundred and twenty-five dollars, and a radio cost of seven thousand dollars. So once we receive that twenty-nine thousand in October, we pay our insurance premium for the coming year of eighteen thousand. That leaves us with ten thousand to help train and certify a firefighter and provide the necessary equipment to do their job at the cost of fifteen thousand dollars. We try to cover additional costs through donations and through the reimbursements from Texas Forest Service. So we're all, we're five thousand dollars in the hole, and that's just for the volunteers to bring them, to try to recruit one. And this year, we recruited two new volunteers, and I already had one to quit, so I already lost some, some of that funding right there, we won't get back through the training. So we don't give them the radio and order them a new set of gear until once they are certified, and we know they're going to be a good asset to the department. So if it's all possible, any increase in that twenty-nine thousand, if we could get it up a little more, we would greatly appreciate it, because that's just helping the volunteers. Do y'all have any, any questions? This is my support, Grayson.
May I? They have been at twenty-nine thousand dollars for more than ten years-
Yeah, for a long time.
Before I started, I'm not saying that's a long time, but-
It was started when Randy Sims was county judge, when I heard.
So twenty-plus years.
Yep. It's been years that it's been twenty-nine thousand.
So Jodah, again, to bring one, to bring a firefighter on, you're at a loss of five grand.
Yes, sir. That's just one firefighter, and I know some of these other departments, District Two, they just brought on two here.
Four.
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 Four, they brought on four firefighters. And y'all, the same way, they brought on some more firefighters, too.
Matt, what about y'all?
I hired two just last night.
I know I do not have skin in the game, but looking at the past history and them not requesting anything and not receiving any increases, I think thirty-five thousand dollars would be a good start. That's our decision.
Yeah, I agree. We, we all have skin in this game. These are the residents that are being served and protected by these men and women.
And like I said, in the, the budget question I sent in, all of us, the way Bryan and College Station are annexing land, I know Precinct Four especially, the City of Bryan coming out west, when they annexed all that back in, what, twenty-eighteen, twenty-seventeen? Well, they kept us on the run card, all right? So we're still providing that service, because they don't have the fire station out there yet. And so we have the fire station, we have people at stations, so we're still responding to those calls. And that's wearing terror on our vehicles, and we're not getting anything from them. So I just wanted to point that out also.
Okay. I was thinking thirty-nine apiece. Chief, I was thinking thirty-nine apiece if we raised it ten thousand.
I'm sorry.
I was thinking thirty-nine thousand, if we raised it ten thousand.
Sure.
Each.
That would be great.
That would help.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go thirty-nine, go ahead, Ford.
Yeah.
Hush. Bakers, not cheesy.
I just want to say we really appreciate the work that y'all do, and your volunteers, and you get people to, I mean, think about it, they come out and-
And like I said, in the budget question I sent in, all of us, the way Bryan and College Station are annexing land, I know Precinct 4 especially, City of Bryan coming out west, when they annexed all that back in what, 2018, 2017? Well, they kept us on the run card, all right? So, we're still providing that service because they don't have the fire station out there yet. And so, we have the fire station, we have people at stations, so we're still responding to those calls. And that's wearing terror on our vehicles and we're not getting anything from them. So, I just wanted to point that out also.
I was thinking 39 apiece. Chief, I was thinking 39 apiece if we raised it 10,000.
I'm sorry?
I was thinking 39,000 if we raised it 10,000.
Sure.
Each.
That would be great.
That would help.
Yes, sir.[950.44][950.44](laughter) Bakers, not cheesy.
I just want to say, we really appreciate the work that y'all do and your volunteers and you get people to, I mean, think about it. They come out and risk their own healthy and safety for their neighbors.
Yes.
It's a unselfish and noble task that so many people serve and God bless y'all for doing it and all your volunteers, all your team for doing it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And we also help each other a lot.
Yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Ready? Sure. Good morning. My name is Robert Orzabal, longtime Brazos County resident and local business owner. Today, I'm here representing Scotty's House as a board member. Scotty's House is the, our region's only child, children's advocacy center, excuse me, this morning. Scotty's House provides safety, healing and justice to child victims of crime through professional assessments, counseling and advocacy at no cost to families. Our center provides free, comprehensive services for child victims to Brazos County. 53% of all our clients are from Brazos County. Without Scotty's House, these victims would lose access to coordinated forensic interviews, medical exams, trauma counseling and court support. In 2024 alone, Scotty's House provided 500, services for 544 children. We did 312 forensic interviews, 73 forensic medical exams, 2,215 counseling sessions along with 98 hours of court testimony and consultation for free to Brazos County. Our request today is for $29,250. That'll help us sustain critical services for Brazos County children. With an average cost per client of a little under $2,000, this funding request will support full services for just 15 children, though we serve over 500 children in Brazos County. We're asking for a little more than what we did last year because of the rising costs of doing, of providing our services. Last year alone, we provided 62 victims from Brazos, from the Sheriff's Department costing approximately $120,000. Our support will help strengthen investigations and prosecutions in the DA's office and we also provide the county with a cost savings for testimony in court. Again, I mentioned that 98 hours of free consultation for prosecutions. Scotty's House values, Scotty's House saves the county's thousands in prosecution-related services while ensuring child victims receive trauma, informed care and justice. Every child deserves healing and every case deserves justice. Scotty's House makes that possible. With your continued support, we ensure that no child in Brazos County gets left behind. I'm a new board member. I didn't have, I've been in Brazos County for 40-years. I didn't, I knew what Scotty's House was. I didn't know exactly what they did until about six or eight months ago when a friend of mine asked me if I would be interested in being on the board. I said, "I'll think about it." I'm on several boards in the, in the area. And I said, "Well, let me, let me go over and check it out." Carrie gave me a tour and just opened my eyes to the things they're doing over there. Before I left, I said, "Carrie, if you'll have me, I'll be on the board." If, I'm on, like I said earlier, I'm on several boards. If you were to ask me that I could, tell me that I could only be on one board, it would be this board. Commissioners, Judge, we really appreciate y'all's support, past and present, allowing, also allowing the sheriff to be on our board along with the DA and we really appreciate your past and present help. Now, we asked for $29,000. If you're willing to give a little more, like you did to the fire guys, we'll take it.[1282.83][1282.83](laughter) Do you have any questions? Because I have Carrie here to answer them.
Well, I will tell you that I do know that Scotty's House does save us a lot of money. There's a lot of things that we'd be paying for in other ways if it wasn't for Scotty's House. So, I mean, I think that is one that we may ought to take a look at, you know, potentially increasing some because, I mean, those victim, those kids that are victims, if somebody wasn't out there, you know, looking after them, taking care of them, they would be in dire shape, so.
And just as an example, when I told my wife about me being on this board, she goes, "Oh, is that where the kids stay?" I go, "No, that's not what they do there." So, it's, there's a, I think we need to do a better job of getting out in the community and telling, telling people what we do. We don't house kids. We help kids that are in need. We help law enforcement get the information they need to get to the DA's so we can prosecute these people.
Monsters.
Monsters. So, any support you give us, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Robert. Carrie.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Next up would be Junction 505.
My name is Robert Glaze. I'm with Junction 505. I am the Operations Manager for the organization. We are a local nonprofit that helps people with disabilities find and maintain employment. We've been around in some form or another for nearly 40-years. We maintain y'all's, we have the contract to maintain the county's rural collection sites. There are six of those sites around the outskirts of the county and I know the residents that live out there really appreciate that service because they don't have the city service. This year, we're asking for a 4% increase, no, 2%, sorry, 2% increase. That's to help kind of cover the cost of living for the employees that live out there or that work out there. And that essentially brings the cost per site per month up to about $65 more than it has been for the past three-years. So, pretty modest increase in the cost per site. That's $15.98 per man-hour. That includes FICA, medical and dental insurance, state unemployment, general liability insurance for all the locations, vacation, sick substitution, supervision, administrative coordination, as well as supplies and overhead. And this, these sites can employ 10 people, three of which are full-time. As always, we're extremely grateful for y'all's support throughout the years. This is a very valuable contract to us. These sites are great for people with disabilities. They're relatively low-stress. It's kind of a quiet, you know, non-stressful work site for people who require that kind of support in, in work site. We also, what we do, our main mission is to find people with disabilities employment in the community and we do that through Texas Workforce Solutions, the Vocational Rehabilitation Office. We take referrals from them and in doing so, we accept these referrals and we do assessments on people to kind of figure out what kind of environment is best for them and to basically make the best job match we can for the people that come to us. And we use these sites sometimes to assess people. We have to do assessments on these people that are referred to us and sometimes, for some people, these sites are a great spot for those assessments to help us figure out what would be the best job match for people. One of the benefits of employing people with disabilities is that many of them were receiving SSDI or SSI prior to employment. In some cases, if they work enough, they, those benefits decrease and, as well as them starting to pay into the tax system. So, kind of a double bonus there. Yeah, that's basically it. Ask of 2% raise this year. That's an addition of $65 per site for, for the year. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions. I know that, that there is no way that the county would be able to operate those, those sites if we had, if we were, if we were our employees for what y'all are able to run it for. You do a really good job overall. I mean, you occasionally get complaints. I get complaints about our employees sometimes, so it's, you know, you get that. That's, that's, that's known, but.
That's what I do.
But y'all really do a good job out there and you do it, in my opinion, for much lower cost than we could do it if we were actually hiring employees and putting them out there. So, a 2% increase for, you know, to try to help pay the employees is really normal. I, I could support that.
Appreciate it.
And to remind the court that the county does sell trash tickets for these sites for the community members to go and take their trash and so they do purchase the trash, trash tickets. The cost that we, that we sell them for doesn't really, doesn't cover this cost at all and so we do gain a little, little revenue back, but not much.
Yeah, we, we've kept that cost fairly low in part because we would much rather people take their trash out there to that collection site rather than throwing it out in the ditch and then we're sending people out there, our staff out there to pick up the trash in the ditch. So, we've not tried to necessarily break even or make money on any trash tickets. It's, it's to help kind of offset the cost of it, but, but it really is to try to keep the trash off of the, off our roads out.
I think, I think it helps. I think it, I think it contributes and works out.
And employees are always so friendly. I used the one off of Copperfield and they're, I mean, they're delightful, so.
Yeah.
Not Copperfield, Copperhead.
Earl is great.
Copperhead.
I was going Copperfield.
Yeah, Copperhead. Earl is great.[1773.62][1773.62](laughter) Any other questions for me?
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nami's going to present real quick after they, I think they're signing in. After Nami presents, I would like to take a little break.